Henderson City Council meeting is called to order. First order of business is the minutes of the November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting. Are there any additions or corrections?
You make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion made and carried. We have license permit application from Kelly Horn.
You're up, Kelly.
Oh, sorry. What do you want me to do?
Just come up here.
Oh, the hot seat?
Yeah.
Right? Yeah, it's kind of all three of us. So you want all three of us? Come on in.
Sure.
Come on in.
Yeah. That was fine.
She's gonna do all the talking anyway. That's okay.
So, everything's in order. You're gonna go for on sale, off sale, Sunday and two a.m. when you feel like it.
Yeah, that's what we're doing.
Okay.
Is your package that's probably about ten days here of the four different applications?
Yeah.
And Eric would do sign off or he could sign out. So all with Tim would be looking forward to be approvals and he would send off the rest and send the stuff off in the morning whenever he has to send.
I'll make the motion to approve.
And I do have a question. So, as you know, everything's been very expensive nowadays with us doing this. If there is any way we could get some sort of break on the licensing for the city, we would really appreciate it. You know, we just had to have the roof fixed and all kinds of things. And I don't know how you guys feel about that, but if you could help us in any way, that'd be fabulous. It's not like there was any grants available to help out or anything like that. So we didn't know if this is a way the city could come in and help support us as we're wanting to support you guys as well and all our nonprofits and things also.
I have no problem.
The first thing I would do is approval license.
Yeah.
And you get the three fees you're talking about is twenty-three hundred, right? Two thousand, two-hundred, two-thousand for on sale, two-hundred for Sunday and two-hundred for off sale.
Motion to approve. Motion to second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion made and carried.
I would like to make a motion that we waive their license fees for this next year based upon the fact that we waive acting sack fees for people.
Yep, and this is a...
Just that we're...
It will benefit every business in town.
And do we still have the revolving loan fund in case you need that?
We need anything you guys know about that could help us.
You can approve the whole thing. There's an application back. It also got to do with supply.
So is that through the city of Henderson?
Correct.
Or is there an EDA?
Well, there's a Sibley County EDA. There's some contacts at Mankato Business Center that threw us in. Things, the bank has got some first aid question. I guess I probably should now have any names, but the banks have got connections to the Mankato times.
Yeah, I'm very familiar with, you know, like the SBA loans, the Sibley County EDA. I just didn't know if the city had an EDA, like one in Arlington with our...
The city, because you're looking at the EDA right now.
This is the... There's also another group in Arlington called Arlington Industries. They're another revolving loan group. So, yeah, anything...
The only other group in Henderson would be the Chamber of Commerce. As far as I know, the Chamber of Commerce hasn't given out any money.
Okay. All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Approved.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you'll let me know about the other stuff maybe.
Yeah, so I don't know if there is the revolving loan.
Yeah, I just talked to Tim and said an application there. Fill it out with Tim.
Perfect. I have the Sibley County...
I think it's got twelve dollars and forty cents on it.
Anything at this point? The interest on that's gotta be real low, right? That's gotta be a grant.
But it's everything we got. We do credit for that.
Well, we can't hold you for that, no.
Thank you for doing what you're doing.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you for helping us.
Is Bullhorn, is Craig, is that Chef Craig?
Yeah.
Okay. Is he involved with the...
That's her husband, yeah. He's actually cooking right now. We just looked at her restaurant. It's jam packed. That's what we hope happens here.
I don't think you're gonna have to worry.
Yeah, especially with Craig in the kitchen, so.
Yeah, that's great. Cool.
Yeah, wait, who's gonna be in our kitchen?
Yeah.
We'll spread it around. Craig, you know, he's like Mr. Credit.
Yeah, there we go.
Yeah. He's a bing, bing. We got it.
Kind of like you.
Yeah, we get along good.
Well, thank you.
These two ground us down. There you go. Like you got that. Yeah. All right, we're out of the hot seat, though.
Yep, thanks for coming.
All right, thank you guys.
All right, we have a hearing on delinquent utilities. Anyone here to discuss delinquent utilities? If not, I make a motion to whoever delinquencies have been identified and put onto two thousand twenty-four property taxes.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion made and carried.
And just a note on that, the numbers are a little less than they have been. You can see on the figures that we'll get six or eight will go off with everybody.
These are our goals, though. Okay. All right, we're gonna move up with St. Joseph's Church property slash Hummingbird Center.
That part of the fact is that a little ways, maybe fifteen, eighteen maybe back. Any more?
So essentially...
The purchase agreement.
Yeah, there's a ladder in there first and then the purchase agreement.
Okay.
It's a ladder like this.
Yep.
Just starts it.
And the diocese wishes to sell the city of Henderson, directory and the church builder at...
Not the directory, just the...
No, it's not the directory, I'm sorry. The hall. Yeah, that would've cost us more. That's only three hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Gosh, that should be a B and B next to the Hummingbird Center.
What's that?
It really should be.
What's that?
The directory should be a B and B.
There we go.
Maybe you should buy it.
There we go.
So you have four salesmen.
I know, I look at it every day. I've been in it. Anyway.
Okay, so...
So did we already put the earnest money down?
No.
Oh, we haven't done anything?
Because, no.
Just checking.
You put in prison? Yeah. So basically what it is, I signed an agreement tentative to move by the city council. We talked about this at the workshop. The Hummingbird people have given us a letter of intent to negotiate a lease arrangement with us, essentially pay for the things we have cash flow right now, negotiate a term with the Hummingbird people. I think it's a great, great deal. And you can't buy property for that kind of money, so.
So we're buying the hall, the church and the parking lot?
Well, no.
Or part of the parking lot?
Okay, Andy Blaschke's property, bike drivers. Then there's a drive next to it. We would get that back to the church and then everything, the church and the hall.
And down the hill?
Yeah, basically down back down the...
So none of the parking lot technically, except for the part right in front of the hall?
Well, the alley, the part of the parking lot is still alley. That alley still exists to this...
Wouldn't be a huge parking area.
Because I'm like, they're gonna need parking for, if this is the Hummingbird Center, for a number of cars.
There seems to be adequate space for, they can develop...
Could be a driveway going out the hill.
Okay.
So. So that's what we got. If there are people who want to say anything.
Oh, I think when you're... This is Amy. This is the...
Okay.
So... Yeah, I would just like them to know too that the Hummingbird Garden is staying right where it is. I mean, we don't intend to move anything. This would be an addition to the Hummingbird Garden.
Right.
Because Hummingbird Garden is established. We get hundreds of people to visit that garden every year. So I just want that clear that we don't... Some people are thinking that we would just move up there and eliminate the garden and that's not our intention.
But you would have things planted up there as well?
Yeah, it's gonna take a while. Yeah, we would have Hummingbird theaters and we'd have some plants.
Yeah.
And we would have things inside the center. We'd have an extensive gift shop. And also there would be videos. We'd have all types of learning, things for birding and hummingbirds. And also children's activities, things that children could make things. We wouldn't be open every day. You know, it would be kind of a seasonal and probably up near the weekends to start out with.
Right, right. And the idea is to centralize it in the social hall?
Yes.
And then what would the church be?
Exhibits.
Okay, okay.
It's educational, too.
Sure.
I think what we did with the eight weeks, educational, bring in people that could talk about a topic and then be an area where they...
Yeah, we had speakers come and it'd be an educational place.
Okay. Is the church eligible for National Library of Historic Places? That's what I was gonna ask, too, because it was, what, eighteen eighty-eight?
You have to get the heritage preservation group together and now...
And ask, yeah. But if the city owns that, that could be a...
Yes.
That could be something that we pursue.
Do you really like the idea?
I really do. I think it goes along with, you know, what I think Doug said at our meeting, that he was paraphrasing you, Keith, that what we have is our geography and our history. And I think the geography, I think this is a really nice way to tie nature in with something that you're already doing and that the Hummingbird Society's already been working really hard at, the feathers. So I think it's a really good, really, really good to bring this into Henderson, too.
And we've had many other, we've been in contact over the last year or so with many other nature centers all over the state. And they're all willing to help move the Hummingbird, the National Hummingbird Center.
It just gives us another draw, you know? And we've got the Nye Center just out of town and this ties really nicely in with that, so.
More people for the restaurant.
Exactly.
Yes.
Exactly. And maybe there could be a little coffee shop and a gift shop sometime.
Yeah.
I've already bought some room. We're in that with the...
When I see that the pews and the appliances are part of the purchasing agreement?
Are they?
I think the pews, yeah, I think the pews stay...
There we go.
I was expecting that. All the providing personal property to be included in this sale. All pews and PA system and...
The kneelers, too, so. The kneelers are part of it, too. So, yeah, you get a...
And all people's chairs and appliances in the center.
All right.
I don't know if Doug's needs are up anymore, Neil and...
No way.
The couple of the pews are over gone.
Yeah, I thought you said they were moving, they were selling them.
Just one township bought them. Not all of them. There's still some pews out there. They took a bunch of pews up. There was some up on top that they emoted and got rid of.
You probably don't want them all.
All right.
But just when Amy was asking about this diagram in the back, the city, Hummingbird Garden is buying sixteen, fifteen, fourteen, thirteen, twelve and part of eleven is what it took. And then plus, there's an alley that runs north and south. And then what Danny is drawing up yet off of Lot Five, there'll be an access off of Lot Five coming from north.
Okay, all right. I'll make a motion to purchase.
I'll second.
Okay. I think we all know that I'm making a motion, but...
Okay.
So you're second?
Yeah.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion made and carried. Thank you guys for coming. And we move forward. One more step. All right. Police Chiefs Monthly Report.
This is the monthly report for the November... One call, two annual complaints, seven assist under agencies, two arrests, one ordinance violation, four traffic citations, twenty-four traffic warnings, fifty-one registered patrol assignments and three in full on the deals. Incidents where we had an ordinance violation assault Third Street, a DUI arrest, one alarm call out on West Main Street, two HRO violations, one CAT complaint on North Eighth Street, one arrest North Fifth Street leaving a traffic stop and assaulting a police officer. Bid on the new body cameras and squad cameras is eighteen thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. Bid on the new radio squad and portables is thirty-two thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars. And a bid, so far I just have a bid on a two thousand twenty-four Dodge Durango, forty-one thousand two hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Ford wouldn't even let bids, they wouldn't even offer a bid because they don't have prices yet for the twenty-fives. You can't get a twenty-four anymore if for a Ford. So I think I'm, he didn't say when he'd be able to get the numbers to me. So I think that I'm gonna wait and see what I bid on Explorer comes up, too. And I also have a phone call into a company to outfit the Durango and how much it's gonna cost. He hasn't got that to me yet. And from January twelfth, first till February tenth, Jake is gonna be gone on leave of absence. So just be me and Dan until February tenth.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, SEX Projects.
So just wanted to come tonight and kind of just give you guys a kind of a last update of the year before we start experimenting with the trucking industry. But at this point, they're just wrapping up. They got South Street opened up to vehicles and stuff like that. They're still gonna be doing some restoration and some stabilization before winter comes just this week. But after this week, they're planning to be out of here. So relatively good news, especially since we have kind of a late fall, if you could call this fall, that we were able to be, we were fortunate enough to be able to get everything done that we wanted to get done. Basically, they stopped right by Beverly Lane. They have access to, or they were able to keep the Hilltop School open. And so that's kind of right where they stopped.
And you like the conditions?
Yeah, yep. I had John Voight, our RPR from the twenty-twenty project, come and review it today. And he said it looks, looks good. Looks very similar to what we left it like last time. So we're expecting good results as far as the road keeping, keeping in shape. Come spring, there's gonna be melt. There's gonna be a little greasy spots, some soft spots. It's kind of just the nature of leaving a road open over the winter. But Jersey is on board to do anything they can do. And they're gonna be leaving a skid steer here over the winter in case an emergency comes up. They'll have a stockpile area just in case they need to quick put some rock down in a soft spot. And they're expecting to be called if there is an emergency, just to have a backload, excavator come in, dig up a frozen gravel if necessary, so.
Looks like there's a couple of soft spots on Minnesota Street. So they, in spring, do they plan on digging those out, or?
Well, we'll see what it looks like. It's hard to, hard to tell right now. I did notice a few more just bumps and I don't know if it's just creating or it's actually soft spots. But, yeah, we'll kind of identify those issues come spring. All right. And I'll just mention, too, so the AFP number three was, I don't know, we approved it. I don't know if we need to do an actual...
It's on, it's on build.
So it's eight hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-four cents for AFP number three. We do expect another AFP number four for the next council meeting. Just not all quantities got done this payoff or this round. So it'll be about two weeks worth of work that they had on January payout. So that, that's where we're at, I guess, as far as that goes. But, yeah, if you want to...
Send bills.
Yeah, yeah. Should be over there.
Yeah, get the money.
The only other thing Chris wanted me to bring up and put on your radar is the active transportation grant that you guys filled out last year. It's coming around again, just in favor...
Resolution is next, yep.
Just...
Have you got that put together? Reapply it and then the full application goes in into January?
Into January.
Yeah. So I just wanted to make sure it's on your radar and just if you guys are...
And then we'll be reaching out to, forget your name, out of the Metro Office to be going on that grant. So that will start that end of the month.
Yeah.
And Chris has got all the maps and whatever, but nothing came out of your office at all. Came out of the Metro Office, all the Metro Grant.
And he just was, I just wanted to confirm that that's the only spot you guys were looking at reapplying for, other than maybe some potential stuff, Splash Pad or Arlington Park?
Well, that, yeah, that's all gonna go in that major...
It's all...
The transportation grant is gonna be basically what it was last year. And then the overall recreation grant is gonna be about a million dollar project overall. And that's, that's gonna be the rest of the trails. It's gonna be Eighth Street. It's gonna be the Splash Pad, Kias, whatever.
Yeah, I just, yeah. Chris just wanted to make sure he has had it on your radar, so. With that, thank you, Chris, as well.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Assistant Administrator.
All right, so for you is Resolution twenty-three twenty-one. So Doug was talking about Resolution proving the application, the active transportation grant. Pretty much same as last year, increased project minimums and maximums. And I think we are asking for four hundred thousand on this grant. And then right behind that is the Sibley County portion of it that they are gonna look at next week for their own approval.
All right, so you need approval of the resolution?
Correct.
Also move.
I second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion made and carried.
And then right behind that, we were able to get out and locate the first twelve trees, GPS located and everything. Really all that's left now is to go talk to these twelve neighboring houses and let them know that they will be having trees come down and then start the process of actually taking them down.
So it's started after the first of the year and...
Yeah, I think as soon as we get in there, it can go immediately after.
Keep Matt busy.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Anything else? All righty. City Administrator, what negotiations agreement?
It's about the eight or nine K deal there. It'll change a bunch of different times, but it's a benchmark right now for what Forest needs. And I got the memo in there for days and he's not gonna be here tonight, just said go ahead and approve this, so.
So this is our agreement with...
It's basically the same. We're gonna pay when, when the water project comes around, we're gonna pay the, pay for that hundred and some thousand dollars.
Right, okay.
The water project that's already...
That's already designed into...
Yeah, okay.
It's designed.
Yeah, okay.
What he was here presenting and what, you know?
Yep.
You need, if you're gonna do it, you need to prove it.
All right.
Motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I just talked with Doug. We're, we're working here pretty quickly. By the end of the year, we'll start working on that, on that overall V and R recreation grant. This will be due by March thirty-first, limited area due by February first.
All right. Anything else?
No.
Personnel staffing.
In this package, basically with the follow-up from last time, recommendations from Chris, Eric mentioned the Jake, this would, that's his letters in there, would deal with two thousand and point four salaries, all the police department is set up. I mean, it's, it's pretty much the same as in the memo.
Yep.
Other than we flushed out some more, some more dates.
You did what?
Flushed out some more dates.
Okay.
It was, we started on Dan's was February first for a contract and it's gonna be January first now after, after Jake is gonna be gone.
With Jake going, yeah.
And, oh, and then we put in the PTO stuff. I guess that should be, that probably should be first, maybe, approving that PTO leave policy.
Making a motion?
Yeah. I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
That ties to, what's that tied to him? That new...
The ES.
ES, whatever it is. And so, yeah, so then now our leave and whatever ties to that ESTP policy and sets whatever all up.
But this follows the state's requirement on that, right?
We're gonna meet the state requirements.
Yeah, because of this.
We'll be, we'll be more, we'll probably be more so, but reporting can get clumsy for him if you have too minute and we're only gonna, so basically we've got one person, depending on how we use, our street department, depending on how we use them, they're the only ones that are, aren't, aren't right now set up to be in that minimum hour category, which is what?
It's up to twenty-nine. It's one hour per pay period. So if they work up to twenty-nine, they get an hour of PTO.
And the library, basically, is up in the same...
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so wait, you made the motion, I seconded.
We voted.
We voted, that's done.
Not yet. I am on the salary.
Okay.
So is Jake going full-time when he returns?
Correct. Thirty-two hours a week. Now, he's not getting paid based on forty. He's getting paid based on thirty-two. So our delineation is thirty hours. Both Eric and James now will be, James has always been in that twenty-eight hours, but because of the new PTO stuff, he and Eric will, we've been giving Eric holidays at a certain percentage and we've been giving him PTO at a certain percentage all the while. Now Eric drops down to a lower level and, but James is at that same level, so we made, we made them the same. And Jake is up one level, but he's not forty. So basically what you got is we'll say, let's take March first when everybody's here. In March, Jake or Eric will be twenty-eight hours a week, Jake will be thirty-two hours a week, and our Dan will be forty hours a week, is the way this is laid out right now.
So, you know, I understand giving Dan health insurance and everything, but why are we giving somebody who works for us in full-time health insurance?
We had agreed to it earlier, I guess we couldn't change it.
We had agreed to it and...
It was a payment, yeah.
Quite frankly, I'm really concerned about getting these guys picked off from other departments.
I mean, so am I, but, you know, crepes, you can go work for the U of M at events and earn a hundred dollars an hour, they can.
Yeah, they can.
So, and, you know.
But that's not, you know.
But that's in the cities.
Right.
And that's in the cities.
I think for our area, we're competitive, we're trying to stay competitive, and I feel like we need to, or we're not gonna retain officers.
I mean, everybody is struggling, and everybody's trying to pick guys from other departments.
And I, I think, isn't thirty-two hours, isn't that eighty percent?
Thirty hours is our, that's.
Yeah, that's our, that is our rate.
But you actually have, you've, I mean, it's more so, Eric is getting reimbursed for Delta as well, and he's only at twenty-eight, so, yeah, so, I mean, that's, it's not a state policy, that's just something, Eric, Eric hasn't, Eric, Eric hasn't been at twenty-eight, this was, this was first of the year is when he's gonna first be at twenty-eight, based on the idea that now he got the forty and thirty-two.
Seems like everybody asks for it, and if everybody asks, it's like, you almost have to do it.
It's a big deal for, to have to pay that yourself, so I would think that that would be a good reason to stay with the job.
Right. All right, I'm gonna make it a motion.
I second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. All right, well, yeah.
Was there a fire for this meeting, I just gotta know?
No, not this morning.
And you're on workshop follow-up, you're at St. Joseph's Church, the Hilltop group is gonna come maybe next time, once you get more information. Heritage Preservation and History emphasis, I mean, I know, I don't know if you got any editorializing you wanna do on that, but I normally wanna start picking that up again.
Yeah, we really wanna start picking it up again.
So, yeah, 'cause we'll do appointments in January at our annual meetings, so maybe we can.
Yeah.
I would, I would like to be on that, so.
You can.
Why?
Because.
Girl.
Because I'm a girl, did you say? We don't wanna do that, Keith. Um, okay, so it has to be non-city council members?
So I'm the liaison for it?
Got it.
But I've been on it for over twenty years.
So you should just keep being.
I'd like to stay.
Yeah, you should.
All right, and stay on the liaison?
Okay.
But yeah, you sure, sure use more people?
Yeah, so if anybody expresses any interest in it.
If you know of anybody that wants to be on the Heritage Preservation Commission, let us know.
Well, they're half of them back there. They don't need those guys to volunteer, they've already volunteered for, Jamie said twenty years, they've been on for fifty.
They haven't been around that long.
Planning a decision?
I mean, it's a matter of whether we wanna start doing that, planning economic development, or.
Yeah, I think so. I think it's time to put them all back into the system.
Okay, we'll work on that.
Yep.
Get that ready for January.
Okay.
Easy.
Yeah, maybe more. Financials, end of the month?
Four million, six thirty-eight, four sixteen point nine is what you got right now of that, I'm gonna, put it again, yeah, of that four, six, six, eight, four oh two forty-four was in, was in investments at the end of the month. Checkbook stuff there too, and then as you look, if you page through the bill, after you take a bill tonight with that eight hundred and some about one dollar, came out to Derby, you have a little four million dollars available.
All right, bills?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion made and carried, cash balance?
Uh, that's, yeah, that's what I just recorded on.
Right, old business? New business?
Can change anything from preliminary budget to six hundred and fourteen thousand, which, one of my major like three percent levy increase, I've got the revenue stuff on the first five or six pages, if you look at page five, overall revenues, budget is twenty-three, two million, two hundred and thirteen thousand four sixty, this year two million, one nine oh six ninety, so pretty close to the same. If you look at expenses, we're adding some new bonds, but we also budget-wise, percent-wise, take them all together, it's about a hundred thousand dollar less in bond debt for two thousand and twenty-three and twenty-four, that'll become a bad in two thousand and twenty-five, so right now you've got about eighty of that in cash flow for two thousand and twenty-four. And I put the rates on there, already said that, if you wanna change something that you're January needing, but you've got another ten dollar rating please effective January one, two thousand and twenty-four, I've got the levy cable there, basically with that two thousand and twenty-four levy of, which is, you have three point five percent, they got on the bottom of the second to last page, for six hundred and fourteen thousand, and then lays out your potential levies to two thousand and twenty-nine, I think that's all we have, unless you got some more, if you got some stuff you really wanna get into?
No.
And if not, then you got those two regulations put on the budget and the other the tax.
Budget two thousand twenty-three dash twenty-two, I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion made and carried, under tax levy, I have a motion.
Do you have those resolutions?
Yeah.
One of the resolutions is at the front.
One for the budget.
Okay.
You wanna see that one?
No.
Oh, and then this one's the, the levy.
Should've been right after.
Yeah.
The cash, the cash out, one that's got four million, zero five five, two thirty at the bottom, it'd be right after that one, that should be the budget resolution, and it should be right before that little stretchy with the tax, tax on the six hundred and fourteen thousand.
You made a motion, I'll second.
No, I didn't make it.
Oh, I just made a motion, I'll make a motion to approve it. I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion made and carried.
Some of the main things, and there might, there's probably a fire for anyone that's got to put on your calendar.
Fire, I'm sure, January.
Uh, the third Monday in January.
Mark, was it January, did you move it, move it on that one or not?
I think it's on Wednesday.
When did you say it comes? Give it to me.
Keith, Keith, do you remember what they decided at the end?
No, I don't.
I don't either, I'll have to get it to you.
Okay.
All right, uh, anything else? Just for everybody's, Juan advises me that the county has received its approvals from the Army Corps of Engineers, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, can you go forward? Any other business?
Just go ahead and schedule.
Can you wait just a moment, Kelly has a question, can she ask a question?
Yeah, I'm communicating with Brooke on the phone here that's in charge of the lying stuff, she wasn't able to be here tonight, she just wanted me to make sure, she sent something for you guys to sign to make sure that change on location, I believe it says, I think he just needs to copy the signed lease, and then the council has to approve the gambling at the new site. She says that I sent him a copy, the council needs to sign, not sure if he will use it or not, I said, would you like me to, I don't know what I'm talking about, but.
Is that for the, to change?
Yeah, the one, the one he got, he didn't have the information on it, but are you gonna sign the lease with the line?
I already did it.
Oh, again, we didn't have a copy of that.
Is there any way we could approve it tonight?
If you're saying you already did it, that's what we were waiting for.
Yeah, so if there's any way we could go ahead and approve it to get that moving forward, so we don't gotta wait till the next month or.
And then, 'cause now he's got the good name of the businesses.
And then we can, I'll tell her right now, email the sign one to you. Okay, sorry to interrupt.
Okay, how do we do that? Good, thanks.
Okay.
But you're not affirmed yet, are you?
No.
No, and what, Tim needs a resolution, what, what was that?
It's gonna be twenty-four.
L G something, oh, right?
Oh, yeah, L G one.
Sorry, I didn't.
Oh, that was.
I have a copy of it in the office.
Yeah, sure, good.
I have the resolution, I have a copy.
We're, we're an hour ahead of time anyway.
I have a question, is this the appropriate time, you can tell me, we cannot talk about this right now, but just in thinking about buying the Hummingbird plant as a city land, is there land that the city owns that we don't use, will never use, that you could sell or would ever want to sell? Just so.
A lot of it's hard, the only, the only way you can sell it is if somehow you ended up with it in some other kind of oddball kind of thing.
Okay.
If, if it was on class.
Yeah.
Then it's planted to be used for public purposes.
Sure.
Forever.
Okay.
We, we just traded some land for park that was dedicated to park by the state, that was a resolution you remember a few minutes ago, and then moved it over. We just sold some land for the levy on the south end, but that was land the city acquired to buy the levy in the first place.
Okay.
So it wasn't, it was, it was, it was a second party transaction, so yes, you can handle it.
The city's not really holding on to any random.
No, in the past, we've had land that we sold off, like down by the sewer plant, well, we sold off the old sewer plant site, but I don't know of anything that we're currently holding that we can even, you know.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, just, just curious, you know, I'd.
Anything that's gonna be in this vendor park, you could carve up, but they've got, that ain't gonna do it.
Right.
But legally, you could, back in the, when the old levy was here, the old levy went along Oak Street, and, and it, and it basically went east and west along Oak Street, and then it followed Twenty Year Old Six straight to the north. Randy's dad actually farmed the bad part of that land, so whoever owned back, right about forty years, but when we bought it, he wasn't owning it anymore, but we bought it from somebody else and pushed the levy further back.
Okay.
So that little, I think, not that you'd ever, that, that was not, that was not planted as vendor park, so there, there's a section in there that in theory, you could, it would be unencumbered, there wouldn't be, there wouldn't be any plaque regulations against it, but in comparison, say to where the brick building is on, the funhouse site and what City Garage is on, I mean, if that City Garage at some point becomes useless, or you move stuff to a different site, and you level that site, it's, it's pretty unlike. You could put something on there like a retail center, or, or housing or whatever, but it would have to be the city's name, because that corner is planted in Market Square, so that Market Square corner goes, each, each lot on each corner has to stay in public ownership forever.
Okay.
Well, as a matter of fact, does, does, do the streets actually exist? Obviously, County Road Six does, but the street between the buildings, the side street, where those blocks are, 'cause that was planted as Market Square.
Yeah, it's not even a street, so.
It's all Market Square.
So, so the reality is, there isn't even a corner of Market and County Road Six or Fifth Street, that is technically Market Square.
Okay.
And same thing, this, this spot was all designated as a park at one, at one point, and so the only, the only way to sit, the city sold or gave that land with simply states here to, for that use, as a housing use.
Yeah.
But it did it as, that's owned by the county, multi-county each, so it's, it's still in public hands, so you couldn't.
Sell it off to a private entity.
Right, a private, private, and, you know, now it's probably two steps down the road, and if somebody did it, nobody would catch, catch it, but if, but if somebody, if they actually decided they were gonna sell that to a private, and you didn't have the right attorney doing the right stuff, you could do it, but the reality is, that should never go out of public hands either.
Okay.
All right.
Well, thanks.
I'll make a motion that we transfer the gambling, or that they be allowed to transfer the gambling to the new place.
And that's what number?
Two thousand. Twenty-three dash twenty-four.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion made and carried, there you go, Kelly.
So you pulled that through for Brooke to Good Street?
Done.
All right. February first.
Thank you so much.
Bingo time.
I'm glad it worked out.
All right.
I was thinking, I'm not supposed to be here, and I'm like, this is tax quick.
Well, there was a lot of stuff to happen from three o'clock.
Yeah.
Seven o'clock.
Hey, I got a dog, thank you, thanks for all your help on that.
You're welcome.
Now, I gotta figure out all this works country to town, it's a little different, so.
So now we have to approve the meeting.
No, we've changed here from here.
Yeah, I have one journey again anyway. So the meeting, revised meeting schedule, what is it?
There's nothing new.
Okay.
No.
Okay, so we don't.
He's gonna add, he's gonna, he's gonna tell us what the plan is.
And we can add that in January, right?
You like to add that, right?
Huh?
You like to add that?
No, he makes the revision.
We can add the day.
Do you think it'll be after the meeting?
Oh, yeah, I'll get it to you.
All right, thanks for coming.